Okay. We will resume with our meeting, and if I could have your attention, please. Is there anyone else present who would care to comment? Okay. I have just a couple of things I'd like to address, points that were made about the tax rate never declining. I'll point out, in the last 15 years, he has declined at Haywood County by 10 percent. It may not be true everywhere, but it's true here. The other comment about, is this the only option that we're considering, the only design option? The way the process worked is we interviewed, we took applications and interviewed architects. A committee was established to select an architect that had what was believed to be the best experience and so forth to do the job. That architect was selected, and based on the needs assessment and direction from county staff, a building was designed. To get another architect to volunteer his time to give us another option, that's not going to happen. He would expect to be paid for his services. So it would be counterproductive to have another architect work for us at the same time. Otherwise, you know, most of the comments made were very polite and very professional, and as a board, we appreciate that. Bill, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to say the emails, you know, were concise, short, and to the point. And, you know, we get a lot of emails, and we appreciate that. A lot of times, simpler is better. And you made your point, and, you know, we appreciate the emails, that you put some time in. To make stuff short, you have to think a little harder to get your point in.
I'd like to follow up on what Bill said. We've had some issues where we received hundreds of form emails, just forwarded, you know, one person writes an email, and 100 people or more send it to us. That doesn't mean a whole lot to me if you don't take the time to put some thought into what you're doing. And as Bill said, I think I got over 40 emails today, and there was, no two were alike. They were all different and original. Kirk, do you have anything?
I just appreciate everyone coming out. It is, it's nice to see people either in support or against something, despite what some people think about what we do and how we perceive people coming to our meetings. It's nice to know what the public thinks and how they feel about certain things. And the only way we get a gauge of that is the receiving of emails, meeting with people, and then them coming to give us their opinion, or seeing the turnout at a public meeting. And so it's beneficial that you're here. And it's also pleasant to hear that you do understand the issues that we face and what we're looking at and the questions that we ask. Even though you have a specific opinion and you want us to do a certain thing, you do recognize that the issues that we have, that we have to deal with, and the decisions we have to make, not only for the people in this room, but for all the people in Haywood County. But I do appreciate you being here.
Kevin?
I appreciate everybody's comments also, and, you know, I think y'all have read a lot of the research I did across the nation about the cost of animal shelters. And most communities did question the cost. And that was a very common theme when I got to doing my research. And we came up, you know, my research indicated $300 to $400 a square foot was what it cost for an animal shelter. And Ms. Berthright was right when what she said when they built a special building for their maple tree, I believe, animal shelter, or animal veterinary building out there, it was very expensive. She found out it was very expensive. And Jackson County just did that. They found out that a 15,000 to 18,000 square foot facility was going to cost in between 5.4 and 6.6 million. That was in the Smoky Mountain News about a month ago. So 5.4 to 6.6 million is what Jackson County was looking at on their initial, when they first got their cost back. So, and we need a new animal shelter. I've been to the one that's here, it's very inadequate. When people have questioned me, I've asked them if they've been to the animal shelter, and if not, when they go, they understand, then they've gone and they've come back, and they're like, you know, "We do need one, it just shouldn't cost that much." But it does cost that much. It's just an expensive building if we're going to do it right, if we're going to do it to industry standards. The state of North Carolina has building codes that we have to follow for a new building. They have building codes for animal shelters that we have to follow. So that's why, that's what's driving a lot of this. As far as the tax, our tax rate too, I think I pointed out the other day, was, you know, out of 100 counties, we're 25th lowest. So Haywood County's tax rate is 25th lowest in the state. That means 75 counties are a lot more than we are. So I feel like we've done a good job in trying to keep our taxes down, and that's our property tax rate. And just as an example, I know I had done the debt service, it's going to be about $2 per person, per year, per capita. So, and that's simply you divide 60,500 residents into the payment, which is somewhere, we think, we don't know until we, you know, get finished with it, around $140,000 a year. And that's $2.30 a year is what it will cost. And as far as things, taxes, the Justice Center is $25 a year, and that payment's going away in a couple, after next year. So next year, that payment will go away, and we're looking at $2 extra dollars a year for our debt service on this. The law enforcement center, which is where the jail's located, is $16 a year. HCC, their animal art, their art building, Arts and Crafts building, was $16 a year is what we pay. DSS building that we just renovated was $10 a year per person. Bethel Elementary School, $23 a year is what we pay. Our education budget for the county, if you used to divide the $15.5 million by 60,000 people, you get around $254 a year is what education costs. HCC, the community college, we help them out, it's $42 a year there, per person, per year. So our total debt service in the Haywood County for our buildings is about $127 per person, per year. And we're talking about $2 for the animal shelter, and that's why I support it. Our interest rates right now are as low as, are historically low. This is a good time to seize an opportunity to be able to get money that's at a very low interest rate. And the USDA's been doing a good job with our rural communities and providing funding at very low interest to the communities. As time goes on, our cost is going to go up. And so the reason I support this is because if we don't do it now, it's going to cost more later. Construction costs always go up, even during the downturn, they've been going up. I know Dale's been working very closely with the architect in looking at the cost. As time goes on, I think y'all need to be aware of that. Dale does a great job for us and understands construction, so he's, and then also, the other thing I wanted to point out was that, you know, our board believes in partnerships. We partnered with the churches, and they've created the Pathway Center to take care of our homeless needs. And that's in turn reduced our jail population, which in turn saves taxpayers' money. We don't have to add a million dollars to the jail now, because the Pathway Center is taking care of that with rehabilitating people and everything. So that was imminent that we were going to have to do that. But I believe in partnerships, this board believes in partnerships, Mountain Projects is doing our senior services, we don't have to hire county staff for that. They had programs available, we provided them space, and they provide a valuable asset to Haywood County. I think it costs a dollar or two a year for us to do that. That's another partnership we do, where we've got, you know, people doing it. And I look forward to having a partnership with the community and the animal rescue groups for our adoption center there at the Animal Services Building. I think that just plays into what our board believes in. And that would be my, oh, and also, I want to thank you all for the thousands, and probably tens, and probably even hundreds of thousands of hours that you spend. I think people don't realize the hundred, you know, the hours that everyone spends volunteering at the animal shelter, and that keeps the cost down, it helps our staff, and that's just another partnership that we all believe in. That'd be my.
Hard act to follow out there. Just a couple of things. You know, when we started this, to look at this, you know, we looked at a lot of different situations, trying to save as much money as possible. We looked at some of our existing buildings that could possibly be used, cost was not, I mean, was going to be more. We identified some of the properties that the county owned, either could not be used due to zoning or environmental issues. We also located a place that the county owned that had a lot of the infrastructure already in place, that would have probably saved the half a million dollars on site preparation and the purchasing the $200,000 property that we had to end up buying. So that would have been a savings of about $700,000 right there off of that $3 million. Didn't work out. We had a lot of opposition there, and it didn't work out, but the, you know, the need is there. It's our job, you know, to try to save as much money as possible as we can. You know, we don't want to, I think all of us here realize the need for an animal shelter. I think that that's, you know, one of the last bits of infrastructure that, you know, that Haywood County has not invested in, and will need to invest in in the future. You've got low interest rates, low construction, or not, hopefully, low construction pricing, but, but our hopes are, is that, you know, yes, that we can, you know, save money, because there's a lot of people out there that really don't understand why you have to spend this kind of money for an animal shelter. I was glad that we had these people here tonight to kind of explain that. I hope people will listen to this thing and understand, instead of just being closed-minded about it. It looks like that we're trying to go the least expensive way that we can on a building. Unfortunately, it's the inside that's going to, you know, going to be costly. It'd be interesting to see how the next month or so goes as we get this thing out to bid. I want to thank you all for stepping up and agreeing to raise money and help this thing. As the research that Kevin has done, that I found, that anywhere that these things have been built, generally, there's a huge participation by the public in raising money and helping, help the county or help the government entity actually build one of these and make it successful in what it needs to be for the county. So I commend you all that, and, you know, I please continue, because that's going to help us make this decision by knowing that we can reduce the cost by private donations. And I had one other thing on my mind while I was sitting there talking about it, and I forgot that. Oh, I know what it is. Okay. I want to thank all of the people, the volunteers that are out there, and the different organizations that's out there. And when we first started talking about this, I envisioned all these organizations coming together, and, because we're basically trying to do and provide a facility that what you all are doing, and it's costing money for each of you all for these facilities, and trying to raise money and do the work and everything. And that's what I envisioned, so I hope that we all come together on this thing and maybe make this the focal point, and all the efforts and the energy goes into this facility. That's all I have to say.
Anything else from the board? Ira, do you have anything?
I would just like to thank the different groups that have shown up tonight and have worked. I have looked for a number of years at the work they have done through the statistics and also through helping people. I know that these groups for a long time have done a lot of great work, and I would just like to thank them.
Julie? Julie? All right. I'll close with one comment that Kevin, in his research, he told me that he saw opposition in lots of communities to the cost of an animal shelter. But in the communities where it was put to a vote, without fail, it passed. So that speaks to the fact that there's a lot of support underlying, I think, some of the noise that we hear. So, okay. At this point then, I will close the public hearing and move to the public comment session, where we can have any sort of dialogue about county business, other than animal shelters. Okay. I don't believe we have anyone, constituent concerns. Bill, do you have anything?
Don't have any, right.
Kirk?
I have one, I think I'll speak to, I'll speak to Ira about it. It's not necessarily something that we have to discuss at a meeting.
Okay.
No.
Okay. We'll take about a one-minute break to allow those who desire to leave to do so. Next is administrative and agency report. We have with us Patrick Johnson, our recently appointed health director, with information on mosquito populations. Yes, sir?
Patrick Johnson, Public Health Services Director, Haywood County Health and Human Service Agency. I would like to talk to you a little bit about mosquito transmission and the diseases it causes, and where we are with mosquitoes in Haywood County right now. One of the reasons why I said yes to the opportunity to be part of the survey in North Carolina was because we have an employee named Aubrey Welch, who has been with us for two years, and I found out that she has, previous seven years, worked in Forsyth County in the mosquito control area. So she is essentially a bit of a mosquito expert. And so when I approached Aubrey, she said yes. So we're one of the, we are the only one of the Western Seven Counties that said, that is taking part in this survey. I did want to just share with you the way mosquitoes transmit diseases to humans. The first kind is animal mosquito to human, and our risk is lacrosse encephalitis. And the median age of people who get this disease is eight. The last two times, in two years ago, we had two people who came down with lacrosse, a six-year-old. And if you look at those symptoms, you can see there can be fairly serious, to include seizures. So it's nothing that we shouldn't be concerned about. The two types of mosquitoes that carry lace are, have already been identified in Haywood County, so we know they're here. The other kind of transmission to humans is really the one that we hear so much about, and that is Zika. That means someone travels to an area, they get bit by a mosquito, then they could travel here, and that mosquito could bite somebody else. That type of transmission has not occurred yet in the United States. And in part of the survey that's being done right now, that mosquito has not been identified in the entire state. So that mosquito is not here. However, there is concern that the, another type of mosquito that is here and across the southeast may adapt to Zika, but that has not occurred either. So that's all good news. If you take a look at this map, it kind of says it all. You can see that we are right in the middle of a lacrosse encephalitis belt, and so that is something that we should be concerned about. Part of the survey that we're doing is Aubrey takes this cup, which has some holes in it, and has this piece of cardboard inside it. She takes it to five sites every week and places it in an area. She picks up five others and moves them around to different places in the county. The first couple of weeks, we didn't have many. Now we're getting quite a few eggs on these. One of the things we know is that a half a cup of water, a mosquito can have 1,000 eggs in it after three days if it is not drained. So that's one of the reasons why we're talking about this. One of the, a couple of the things that we need to be looking at is risk factors for this disease, and that's time spent outdoors. This is the time of year where little kids are outside in t-shirt and shorts, and lots of us live near woods, and one of the concerns, and that's where mosquitoes lay their eggs, in tree holes, in knots and trees where there is water. If there is tires or other trash that has water in them, mosquitoes will leave the woods for those trash sites because there is a water source, and usually, there's also a blood meal nearby, meaning a human. So the mosquitoes will leave the woods to breed in tires. The other thing is abundance of mosquitoes. We're not seeing that yet. The pica, the mosquito season, is mid-August to mid-September, so it's really just starting right now. We want to talk about personal protection in the next slide, but I would like to add one thing to this slide. What I learned is that a mosquito will travel up to 500, five football fields in length to get a blood meal. So if your neighbor down the road has a pile of tires, thinking it's only going to affect that neighbor, or that person, it can affect neighbors also. Mosquitoes will travel for a blood meal. There is no vaccine. Prevention is the cure. And the three things that we want people to know is drain. Drain the sources of water on your property, and that means old tires need to be emptied or disposed of properly. Bird baths need to be tipped, no fewer than every three days, and trash heaps need to be cleaned up. The campaign in North Carolina is tip and toss. When feasible, we should be outside with long sleeves and long pants. When it's hot, that may not be feasible, and we should be wearing deet on exposed skins and living, and trying to make sure our screens in our homes are intact. Finally, we do want people to know, if elderly and disabled citizens, they can get help or mediating mosquito hazards on their property at no cost by calling the Haywood County Health and Human Services Environmental Health at 828-452-6682. And if a neighbor isn't willing to cooperate with cleaning up mosquito hazards on their property, you can call Haywood County Code Enforcement at that same number, 828-452-6632.
Thank you. Questions?
Good report. I'm not going outside this summer.
Yeah. Well, I'm in the tire business, so I guess I'm breeding a bunch of them.
Put those tires up.
Yeah, I know. I'll be out there tipping them tonight.
I will tell you that Aubrey not only does the collection here, when she goes out at some of the code enforcement sites, she does take a, kind of a siphon, to collect some water from tires, and she gets, always gets mosquito larvae, and we take that to Western Carolina mosquito lab. And so we've identified five types of mosquitoes here, two that carry lacrosse, and one that is a potential, just a potential, for Zika if it is, adapts to it.
Yeah. Could we, on our government channel, scroll these numbers for people?
Yes.
If they need help cleaning up, you know, an old person or something?
Yes, we can scroll this.
Great. Do you guys have any questions of Mr. Johnson?
No. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any adjustment to the agenda today? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the June 6, 2016 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? If not, recognize Judy Hickman for our refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries.
I'm requesting approval of the May releases, refunds, amendments, and discoveries. Everything is business as usual. There was nothing out of the ordinary to report.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay. Next is our tax collector, Mike Matthews, with a report on tax collection update.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Right now, our current collections, we're at 96.23 compared to 96.46 this time last year. I kind of ran some numbers through mid-month just to see what we're pacing. They're not, I mean, we're about half a percent up from where we were two weeks ago, with another half a percent, which will probably finish out the end of the month stronger than we did the first, will be right at where we were last year. So we're looking good there. As far as our delinquent collections go, we have collected 90, let's see, 941,309. We're about 56 off, from 56,000 off from last year, from where we were delinquent was. Again, we're pulling from a smaller pot this year than we were last year, but we do have some good measures in place for that, so.
Are we still active with the tax refund interceptions?
As far?
Tax refund?
Oh, yeah, yeah. For the garden, that sort of thing? Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess that requires a pretty up-to-date list, doesn't it?
Right, right. So.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Matthews? Thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay. The fourth item of the consent agenda, our series of budget amendments. Julie Davis.
I have a few year-end budget amendments for you. The first one is a rather large one. It's a $575,000 increase in our health insurance fund. This is mainly due to high-end utilization of service. We're self-insured, this is not premium-related. Once some of these utilizations hit about $100,000, we do go into a reinsurance program. Now, what we're doing, I'm increasing 575,000, and I'm reducing, for the claims, I'm reducing the administrative expense by 25,000, because that's a little bit lower. And then I'm showing additional revenue that we are transferring in from the general fund that's actually budgeted every month for health insurance. And when I was a little bit short from that, I'm taking some money from the workers' comp fund to transfer in to make up for that 575,000. The workers' comp fund has over a million dollars in fund balance at this point.
So high utilization really just means that we've had some very ill employees?
We certainly have.
Yeah. Any questions on that one? Okay. We'll move to the special revenue fund.
Special revenue fund, this is our E-911 special revenue fund. We have, we noticed that the revenue that we had budgeted is a little bit less than what we have finally got confirmation that we're going to be receiving, by about $23,390. So we're using that increase in revenue to cover some salaries and benefits that are used for in-house maintenance costs for that fund. These are, these are funds throughout some of the other departments, such as IT, that we can count as this special revenue fund expense and use those 911 funds to cover.
Questions there? Okay. The general fund, item C?
This general fund is a final cleanup. There's not much left here. We do have additional funding in the registered motor vehicle tax. I've used that a couple of times for budget amendments this year. It's coming in quite a bit higher than we had originally anticipated, and we're using it to cover some extra primary costs for using poll workers for that additional primary that we had to have for the Congressional and Supreme Court voting. And then we have some register of deeds. Again, there's a little more money coming in from register of deeds that has to go out, a portion of it that has to be sent to the state. We have a project for facilities and maintenance that was kind of unexpected. Y'all had mentioned last year to get some paving done around the Paragon Parkway area, and we put that money in, 25,000. And then we had 4H United Way Extension Grant that actually has a revenue directly related. They had revenues coming in a little bit higher than what we had planned, and they want to use those funds for that program.
Okay. Questions there? Okay. Item D?
This next one is a health department grant. It's $5,442. It's actually a pass-through from Macon County, so this is for the Obesity, Diabetes, Heart Disease, Stroke Prevention Program.
Okay. And the final one on the general fund for social services.
This is social services. It's a $40,000 amount that our social services department noticed they had a little money left in their foster care line item, and would like to use those funds to purchase some vehicles and to put some furniture in the training room and some appliances in the emergency shelter that social services operates.
Questions there? Okay. Any further observations or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
So move?
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Okay. We don't have any... Okay, we don't have any old business. We'll move to the first item of new business, which is the fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget ordinance. Ira Dove.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, members of the public, we've been working through this process for several months, um, and at this time I would present the budget ordinance, essentially the, the changes are the ones that we had discussed at the work session. I would like again to thank Julie Davis and her staff for all of the incredibly hard work they put into getting us to this point, and ask, do you have any questions on this budget ordinance?
There is no tax increase, is that correct?
Uh, no, there is no tax increase on the budget ordinance, and I would also note that although taxes or budgets may not go down, for seven years, we held the line with a budget that was lower than 2008 until last year.
Right.
So for several years, we were able to. This, this one, no. This one is higher than the, uh, the 2008 budget.
A long time.
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Did, um, well, the changes made to the fund balance appropriation that we talked about?
Uh, the changes are not, have, the fund balance appropriation has not been changed. If that is something you would like to bring up at this time.
Do we want to separate that issue that I talked about, or just, I just had to vote against the whole thing?
I think the, we don't want to vote against the whole budget off that one item.
I'd rather not. I'd rather vote for the budget.
The way we could address it would be just through a budget, an amendment, that you would amend, offer an amendment to this budget ordinance and get a straight-up and down vote.
Okay. So you want me to move to approve the budget with an amendment to remove the twenty-thousand-dollar fund balance appropriation for the sprinkler system?
Okay. We wouldn't be voting to approve the, this would be just an amendment to it, and then once we vote on the amendment, then we'll vote on whether or not to pass it.
Okay.
So we have, we have an amendment to remove the twenty-thousand-dollar item, which was the final priority, I believe, um, from the list that was presented at the work session. So I would entertain that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Remember at the work session, there was a list of items?
He didn't get a second. That passed.
Well, he got a second.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're down to discussion now. Is there any, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. So we'll remove that item then from the budget ordinance.
Okay. And then with the remaining budget item?
What?
With the remaining budget. So that's just removing that? You had a motion to amend?
Just removing that item. We need a separate motion to entertain approval of the budget ordinance.
Okay.
An amendment stands on its own. Was I correct in that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so now, we need a, a motion to approve the fiscal year 2016, 17 Haywood County budget ordinance, as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, okay. All right, next up is Ira, again, with approval of revised Haywood County organizational chart to be effective upon approval.
Uh, every so often, we come before you, the last time was about eighteen months ago when we did some reorganization. The primary change this time is putting fleet management under the facilities maintenance. There are a few other technical corrections across the board, but that's the primary change in responsibilities.
I think they're having some trouble hearing you out there, Ira. Need to speak a little louder, maybe under the mic?
Okay, the primary change is putting the fleet management under facilities and maintenance. There were some technical corrections. For example, uh, on the independent board for soil and water, we corrected the note to say two members are state-appointed and three members are elected rather than the prior note, but the rest is, uh, the reporting is pretty much the same as it was in the last version of January of 2015.
Okay. Any questions of Ira on the revised Haywood County organizational chart?
This, um, this has a line to, we appoint the library board, county manager, you've got a line to the library, which means you are, um, you supervise the library director, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I just want to, I want to make sure that that's, that's clear. And, um, kid, and I assume with it, never mind, this is, this is kind of off the subject, but I need some guidance here for the board that I was put on. Can we continue to be called the Board of Trustees, the library board, with this? Chip, you see any problem with that? I mean, I don't know that the, you know, different, different boards are called, some call it the Board of Directors and some are called the Board of Trustees. And now the Board of Trustees for the library board is more an advisory board, or it is an advisory board as opposed to a governing board. And so I just, I just want to make sure that this coincides with how the library board is supposed to proceed, so I can give them some guidance on that. That's an issue.
Does it have a separate organizational structure other than just?
It has, it has bylaws.
It's just a, it has bylaws, but it doesn't have, it's, it's not, it's not a corporation.
No, it's not a corporation, so that, that's why, that gave me the, the thought of it shouldn't be the Board of Directors. It should probably main trustees, it's just an advisory capacity.
Seems to me that, um, what it really is is an advisory board.
Right, yeah.
Not a trustee. There aren't trustees because they don't, a trustee implies that you manage money, that you have fiscal responsibilities. To me, it does.
And, and the, um, under the county website, it does indicate that there is some, not necessarily control over finances, but advisement as to finances, whereas opposed to most advisory boards don't touch finances. I'm not certain.
Well, the health board is advisory now and, and...
They discuss the budget.
Yeah, we, we discuss the requests presented to the county and so forth. You don't, you vote just to present it, you don't have...
You make recommendations. And isn't it what the hos, hos, isn't it what the library board does to, makes recommendations to the director? The director's supervised by the county manager, is that correct?
Uh, yes, the director is supervised by the county manager. That, that's which happened in 2014, December 2014, with the revised, in the revised o-chart in 2015.
I guess for the purposes of this and not to elongate the meeting, this, this organizational chart, um, doesn't, um, doesn't, I mean, it doesn't even speak to that, so, but it's okay the way it's listed, because we do appoint the library board, whether they're trustees or directors or an advisory board, and the county manager is, um, in a supervisory capacity over the director, so, I mean...
Correct.
The chart's fine, I think that's something that we need to discuss later.
I'll be happy to.
Just need some direction.
I'll be happy to, to work out that, and if you want, look at bylaw.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure where the director fits in, but certainly the director should be somewhere on Haywood County. I would say that's lib, it...
That's the library.
I assume when you say library, I mean, you've got economic development, that's the economic development director. So library means library director.
Okay. Correct. It means the library itself is direct line to the county, yes.
And I think it's probably as accurate as we can get it.
Yes.
It's not really, and again, not to belabor a point, but it, the recreation board is exactly the same now as, as the library board, their advisory to a county function.
I think so, yeah.
And we don't even have them, that board listed on here.
That is correct.
Now, Ira, we don't have any, anybody that is called trustees, do we? We don't have that name in any of our committees, do we, Mr. Chairman?
No, no, not county, no.
That, that's probably a vestige of when the library board was a trustee board.
Mm-hmm.
Which, but yes.
Are you happy, in light of the comments, are you happy with the chart?
Uh, for what it represents, I think, yes.
Okay.
If, but I will be happy to amend in any way you want.
Do we need to put recreation on here, somewhere?
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we need to be consistent. We have parks and recreation.
I know we haven't done much lately, but...
I can, I can add them as an advisory...
I want to stay on the chart.
I can add them as an advisory board. I don't know of any other, uh, boards for these other, probably the more consistent way to do it, since planning also has a board, is simply to remove the library board, because you have several here, but we, where we can put their advisory boards on here. And only list boards that have some mechanism of, uh, control, because the consolidated sees, the consolidated health board has statutory features that are beyond, and I guess so.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that you, you will make those changes with the boards, and so the, any approval we make would be contingent on those changes?
Yes, I will be adding the, the boards in.
Okay. Is everybody happy with that?
Mm-hmm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, then we'll entertain a motion that the, uh, Haywood County organizational chart be approved contingent on the amendments agreed upon.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, next is item three, with Julie Davis with us, for approval of a quote from One Beacon Government Risk as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for property and casualty insurance for the county. Julie?
Every few years, we put, put out bids for property and casualty insurance. Actually, our agent, our broker does, puts out the bids and does the analysis for these bids. We had three bids come in this year, and one of them, One Beacon, the governmental risks insurance company, came in with the lowest bid for what they were providing, which was coverage of all of our buildings consistently like we require. The amount of the premium we're going to be paying is three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars.
Okay. Any questions there? Okay, then we entertain a motion that the bid as presented, the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars received from One Beacon Government Risk be approved.
So move.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to John Chacon. John?
This is approval of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council County Plan and Budget for fiscal year 16 and 17. Thank you, Commissioners. Tonight is just a more formality to make, or for your approval. The North Carolina Department on Public Safety requires the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council certification each year, and that was presented to you for your approval. Also, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council County Plan, and the priorities for funding this year are restitution and community service, residential programs specifically temporary shelter, specialized foster care and group, home, structured day programming, skill-building programs, and mentoring. So those are there for your approval.
Okay. Any questions of John?
Who served, you served on this, who serves on this board?
JCPC?
You serve?
Bill.
Yes.
You good with it?
Yes.
You good with it? Okay. All right, if there's no further questions then or comments, we entertain a motion that the JCPC County Plan and Budget for fiscal year 2016, 17 be approved.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioners.
John, that was short and sweet. You promised, though.
Thank you, yes, I did.
Thank you.
Long wait, too.
Yeah. Okay, the next two items deal with the Haywood Community College. We have Breck Lanning, the HCC Director of Campus Development with us. Breck, you can explain while you're here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. This request is, is involving our current capital outlay balance of two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, twenty-six dollars. That money was requested for the sole purpose of paving projects and sidewalk projects for this, this fiscal year currently. We're requesting that we utilize that money in combination with ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-three remaining in capital projects currently, as well as nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars in unspent interest involved in the current loan. Uh, that would total three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, combining that into a single capital projects account to be utilized for paving, future paving on the campus. And currently, the basis for the request is our window of opportunity that doesn't affect students and faculty and staff greatly is the summer months, basically from mid-May through early August. And with the fiscal year falling dead center in that, that really hampers us on completing those projects, so we either have to have the projects completed and build out by June 30th or begin them as soon as July 1st rolls around, so it really limits your, your window to, to actually get that done without affecting progress.
Okay.
So that's, that's the request. Our Board of Trustees approved that to move forward with this on June 6th for requests, but that's, that's the basis if there are any questions.
Julie, you have any comments?
Yes, I do have just a, a little bit, in, in my way of an explanation. The, the community college has some projects that are completed, and there's money left over in those projects, and we need to close the projects and do something with that leftover money. And at the same time, we have capital requests that he was saving for paving. So what we're going to do is just combine those two and put it into a capital project for them to use for paving eventually at the community college.
Okay. Any questions of Breck? If not, then I would entertain a motion that a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars be placed into a single capital projects account. The source of those funds were Haywood County capital outlay appropriations, uh, funds remaining from completed capital projects, and interest. Okay, so entertain that motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Breck.
So that should cut down the sixty percent way down, right? You said sixty percent, uh...
Sixty percent, yeah, we're, we're still about sixty percent.
Sixty percent in need of paving or sidewalks. You don't have me to get sidewalks or asphalt? You have much left?
About sixty percent still is original to the campus, so it's, it's sixty-five years old. Wow. It's, uh, most of it was done in about sixty-seven, sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
We, we need to get the same quality asphalt, then, we got sixty-seven.
Yeah, it's held up pretty good considering, so, thank you.
Thank you. Julie, I guess you're up with a budget amendment to cover this, a part of it?
I have two budget amendments to go with this one. The first one is to actually close out the projects, and this is where we have the ninety-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five left over in the projects. We're going to close them out, and we're going to transfer them. So that's what this first budget amendment does.
Okay. Any questions there? If not, then, uh, a motion that the budget amendment be approved as presented. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, and then the second budget amendment takes the money we just transferred, adds it to the, um, capital outlay that they have appropriated in the general fund, and adds it together to set up a brand-new capital project. So they will have three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars sitting there, um, now, actually. I was going to say as of July 1st, so that when they are able to start paving projects, the money will be there.
Okay, we entertain a motion to approve that budget amendment.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did Mr. Lanning leave?
No, he's back there.
Oh, there you are. I didn't see you. Okay. All right, again, you're up for approval of a change order.
Uh, this, this request is for approval of SCO Field Order Number Two on a public services training facility project, and this, this is the remaining unsuitable soil removed after our previous request from Field Order One that we brought forward earlier. That total amount of this request, thirty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-three dollars and thirty-four cents, and I've got Scott Donald here with PFA Architects to explain the basis of that.
Uh, on previous, um, good evening, on a previous field order, uh, I guess it was before they started the building construction, we ran into a lot of unsuitable soil, which was mainly groundwater and dirt that could not be used for the construction, so a lot of that was hauled off and replaced with good soil. That was the original ninety-four thousand. When they started the construction of the new build, in the classroom building, we ran into additional groundwater, so we made the, approximately a twenty-thousand-dollar investment to install a French drain at, at the toe of the hill behind the building, and we actually shifted the building over twenty feet to, to give more room for that French drain system. So most of the money spent on that was, was a drain next to the storm drain and washed on gravel. So we paid a lot of money for gravel in that area, but it's a good investment to keep the groundwater away from the building. uh, to keep the groundwater away from the building. So when they started excavating the, uh, building foundation itself, all of the footings had to be undercut, uh, backfilled with washstone and wrapped with filter fabric. So what we decided to do there, and this is all work under our soils engineer, uh, was to put in French drains under the entire building. So we have a series of French drains, which is, this, most of this investment is, and, uh, the water continues to flow out of these French drains today. We did a similar type system at Clyde Elementary at the to- at the toe of that hill, uh, if you guys remember that. So the groundwater, I will, I will say, we are out of the dirt, the steel is up, and we are, um, the roof deck is on, so you can see the shapes of the buildings now, and so we're done with dirt, basically. And they're getting ready this week to pour the floor slab in the classroom building.
Okay, and this would come from contingency, Breck?
That's correct.
How much, how much do you have left?
Um, the contingency, it should leave approximately, I've got that number here, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, um, total from our, from our contingency listed on our three-dash-one form, so...
Now, any questions of Breck? If not, would entertain a motion then that change order number two in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents to, um, for removing unsuitable soils be approved.
So move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
And Julie is up next with a budget amendment.
Budget amendment is just like you said just a minute ago. We're moving thirty-eight thousand, one hundred four from contingency in that particular project into the construction.
Okay.
Of course, the project.
Entertain that motion, or entertain a motion that that budget amendment be approved as presented.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, and Julie is up next with a, an agreement for the protection, development, and improvement of forest land in Haywood County, be a contract between North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services of Haywood County. Julie?
This is a contract that we, we, um, approve on an annual basis. It's been a sixty-forty split annually. Um, we usually have some representatives from the Forest Service here, and a lot of them have gone to fight fires in Arizona, but we do have Dylan Michael here, if you have any questions of him, of the North Carolina Forest Service.
And we've done this about every year, uh, if I can recall.
About every, yeah, every year. And it's been a sixty-forty split, the dollar amount of that forty percent is what changes a little bit this year, well, for next year, a hundred and third, a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred is the forty percent.
Okay. Any questions of Julie? Okay, then we entertain a motion that, uh, that agreement as presented be approved. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is Johnny Glance with a request for fireworks, uh, approval, uh, for a display and, uh, from Dutch Cove Missionary Baptist Church on July fourth.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have another fireworks request, uh, Dutch Cove Baptist Church, for July fourth. Uh, they have met all the requirements, they have contracted with Pyrotechnics Company, they have all the license and the insurance, just as the municipalities in Junealuska does, so...
If there's no objection, then we entertain a motion that that request for fireworks display be approved. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Hey, Johnny, is this, I've never seen them do this. Is this the first time they've requested this?
This is the first time. It is.
That's interesting.
Well, one of their members actually went and went through the training for this, too.
What about that?
Their license, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, again, we stay with our Fire Marshal requesting approval for an agreement for software for the county. Johnny?
This is an agreement, uh, between the county and Bryser LLC for their compliance engine. As quick as I can, uh, businesses in our county, a lot of them have sprinkler systems, alarm systems, restaurants have, uh, hood systems. All those systems are required to be maintained and inspected on a, on a certain basis, uh, by the state fire code and NFPA. Uh, what this company does through their software platform is bring our office together with those, uh, companies, and we're able to see what goes on with those systems through the year. We'll know if they're substandard, if they have problems. Uh, it will give us a, a real good take on what's going on in the county. A lot of these, uh, occupancies, we only inspect once every three years. So these systems can go non-compliant in that time, and we wouldn't, wouldn't know anything about it. So it brings these, these contractors together with us through this platform, and we know what's going on in the county. Now, we've spoken to all these contractors. Asheville uses this system along with Greensboro, Raleigh, and several, uh, municipalities and counties nationwide. All of these contractors, uh, recommend the system. What happens, the county doesn't pay anything for it. They don't pay anything for the system, don't pay anything for the training of our personnel to use it. Uh, all fees are paid through these contractors that maintain these systems, a ten-dollar charge per entry into this system. How they, how it works for them, uh, they have found an increase in revenue for the companies, because all these systems are being maintained the way they should be.
That's like a win-win proposition then, yeah, so... If there's no questions, uh, Johnny would, um, entertain a motion that the, uh, agreement between the county and Bryser LLC for the software to be used as described be approved.
So move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is, uh, Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, requesting approval of a low bid. Jeff?
Good evening, Commissioners. Coming for you this evening looking, uh, for the request and the approval of the lowest responsive responsible bidder, which happened to be Cisco Knoxville LLC for the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, for inmate food services for the detention center.
And we arrived at that cost based on prior year, uh, expenses?
Yes.
Because we don't know how many people's going to be in the jail.
Yes, sir.
So... Any questions of Jeff? If not, would entertain a motion that, uh, the lowest responsible, responsive bid from Cisco, uh, Knoxville LLC, the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for inmate food supplies be approved. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, Stony Blevins with, um, requesting approval of an annual contract between HACSA and Southwest Child Development.
Sir, good evening, gentlemen. I'm here tonight to request approval of a contract with Southwest Child Development to administer our childcare subsidy fund. Uh, these are funds that are primarily, uh, distributed to working parents to subsidize them paying for their childcare so they can continue to work. The amount of the contract service dollars is three million, one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. There's also a hundred and five thousand dollars in administrative money that goes to Southwest to run the program, but all of these funds are actually state and federal funds, so there are no county dollars involved in this request.
Just, just to pass through. Okay, if there's no questions, uh, comments, then, uh, would entertain a motion that the annual co- contract between Health and Human Services Agency and Southwest Child Development Commission in the amount, um, described by Stony Blevins be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, the fifteenth item of new business is a request of a approval of a fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen federal funding for the Home and Community Care Block Grant totaling four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars, including a county match of ten percent. Julie?
You said exactly what it was, and actually Sarah Jane Melton from Region A is here. Um, she's in charge of the, um, Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding for older adults in, in the entire region, but especially for Haywood County. If you have any questions about the program, and by approving this budget, we'll be able to sign all the, um, forms for all the different programs. The funding passes through the county, it goes to Haywood County Health and Human Services, Mountain Projects, and Interim Healthcare.
And again, this is an annual...
It's an annual thing, yes.
Annual thing we do every year. Any questions of Julie? If not, then would entertain a, a motion that the Home and Community Care Block Grant as described be approved.
So move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item sixteen is requesting approval of an inter-local agreement between Haywood County and the Junealuska Sanitary District for the installation of sewer lines on North Carolina two oh nine, with county funding in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars as part of a Golden Leaf Grant. David Francis.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have some good news, uh, to bring you all. Last year about this time, the county started an initiative, um, an emphasis on economic development in Haywood County. And through this, we applied through a Golden Leaf Grant. And Golden Leaf is, uh, a rise from back in the late nineties for the tobacco settlement, and they have an emphasis on economic development in rural communities. So we applied for this grant, uh, back in late September. Uh, we had three proposals. We chose the Lake, or, excuse me, the Junealuska Sanitary District proposal that was going to run sewer from basically the Smoky Mountain Rehabilitation Center out to River Bend Elementary. And the reason we chose this was there was two businesses along there at the truck stop, both with failing, uh, sewer systems that will, uh, need to be replaced. And as you may remember from our September meeting when we discussed this, both of those systems are, have a notice of violation, uh, through the Department of Environmental Quality. And with the school system, uh, River Bend also has a aging system that will need to be replaced in years to come as well. So we, uh, sent this grant, uh, down to Golden Leaf, and, uh, we were awarded, uh, we, uh, one million dollars. We had requested one point five, but we were awarded one million. And so with this, there is three different funding sources to get this three-point-eight million project, uh, completed. It is roughly about a four-mile project, uh, from, uh, the rehab center to the school. And part of that, uh, is the million dollars from Golden Leaf, three hundred thousand, uh, matching grant from the, uh, county, and, uh, over two million dollars from the Clean Water Fund through the DEQ. And so as part of this, I'm seeking, uh, the approval of the inter-local agreement that would have the county match that we, uh, talked about back in September of, uh, two thousand and fifteen, uh, is to go ahead and approve that match. This, uh, until the construction project is up and running, this, uh, money will remain in a special reserve fund. It will not be, uh, in with other, other funds that are operational with Junealuska due to the funding, uh, way that the grant is, this, uh, funding, or that has to stay in a separate accounting. Um, before you, uh, we had, uh, asked for a three-tier payout for the funding from, uh, the county to Junealuska. They've come back and asked for a two-tier payout. The, uh, fifty thousand, uh, now, once the agreement is executed, and the balance of two hundred and fifty thousand, once the construction project is underway. Uh, that's the one change you'll see that we have on the, from what you, uh, the document now, that they have asked us to approve, uh, from what you have before you, that we did, uh, last Thursday. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, uh, about that.
Yes, I've been reviewing it, been working with David all along, and with Bert Smith, their attorney, and, uh, this does include a change we just heard about today, as a matter of fact, and, and the financing scheme, uh, as he just described, but I'm fine with it, yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, then would, um, entertain a, a motion that the inter-local, uh, agreement between Haywood County and Junealuska Sanitary District, as amended and described, uh, by, uh, Mr. Francis, uh, be approved.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you for the mister part. Pardon, so thank you for the mister part.
You're welcome, sir. Ms. Julie Davis?
You might remember that we have been kind of protecting three hundred thousand dollars worth of contingency in the hopes that this would be coming along. So now that it has hit, we have three hundred thousand in contingency that we're going to move into an economic development line item so we can cover this grant match.
Okay, if there's no objection, we entertain, uh, a motion that that budget amendment to move the three hundred thousand from contingency, um, to the GNC two oh nine corridor project be approved.
So move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The last item of new business is requesting approval of a resolution for the sale of a county-owned building at two one seven seven Asheville Road to Mountain Projects Incorporated for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and to provide in-kind service of project management for the rehabilitation process of the building in a negotiated private sale to a nonprofit for a public purpose, and approved to advertise same. Ira Dove and, uh... Ms. Davis from Mountain Projects is with us.
Yes, uh, good evening. This is, uh, exactly as you said, this is for the approval of the sale of the old health department. Uh, the price is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I have a resolution which I'll read in a moment, but just to refresh everybody's recollection, that we had this on the market for a while, and, um, although it was priced significantly higher, we got really no bites on it, uh, for consideration. Couple of people would have been happy if we'd have given it to them, a couple of different nonprofits and groups, but that really wasn't an option, given what you have in this property. And, uh, Mountain Projects came forward with a, a good proposal here for you. I'm going to read the resolution which, uh, our county attorney prepared. This resolution coming on to be heard this twentieth day of June, two thousand and sixteen, before the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, the county, where the county's received a proposed agreement for purchase and sale of real property dated June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the offer or contract, uh, for Mountain Projects Incorporated and North Carolina Nonprofit Corporation for a certain one-point-zero-five-five-five, uh, acre parcel of land and building located at twenty-one seventy-seven Asheville Road, Waynesville, North Carolina, known as the old Haywood County Health Department Building and identified as parcel eight-six-two-six-zero-two-one-three-nine-nine, and parcel eight-six-two-six-zero-two-three-four-six-two. Same being a portion of that property described in deed book one sixty, page one sixty, Haywood County Registry, set offer being for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cash. And where is it appearing, uh, that the proposed purchaser would utilize said property for public purpose? And whereas the county has authority to sell and convey said property in the manner authorized herein pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Sections one sixty A dash two-seventy-nine, one sixty A dash two-sixty-seven, and one fifty-three A dash one-seventy-six. And whereas the county may include conditions in the deed to assure that the property will be put to a public purpose, and whereas the county is required, uh, by statute to publish a notice of said offer to include a summary thereof, and a statement of the county's intention to sell and convey the property in accordance with the fore-said terms and conditions as set forth in the offer. Now therefore be it resolved that the county manager is authorized and directed to publish a notice of this resolution, uh, once on Friday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen, and a newspaper of general circulation, that after ten days has expired following the publication of said notice, the county manager is authorized to execute the fore-said offers resulting in a contract, that this matter shall be brought back before the Haywood County Board of Commissioners for final approval prior to closing. That is the resolution, and the other parts, when we bring the resolution back, we will discuss the in-kind services that they had requested.
Okay. Any questions of Ira? Patsy Davis is here as well, the Executive Director of Mountain Projects. Anyone has any questions of Patsy? We all know the good work that Mountain Projects does, so it's, uh, very good to have this, this partnership and this relationship, uh, with that agency. So, if there's no question?
I, I just had a couple of comments about the fact that this, this building has been on the market for several years, and we have not had any viable offers made on the property. It continues to have to be maintained, uh, and, uh, Mountain Projects... And Mountain Projects is an organization in Haywood County now that is seeking another place to go, and we certainly want to keep them here and keep those jobs here in Haywood County as well. And so those are some of the reasons for supporting the sale of this particular piece of property.
It's also with maintaining that building, there's been some issues there because no one's in it. It's cost the county quite a bit. During a couple winters ago, we had some issues there, and so it's good to have somebody in the building because they tend to deteriorate. And again, we've been trying to move that building for quite some time.
Yep.
I did want to make a comment. Also, this is where Mountain Projects is now, where they're located now was a county-owned property.
It was.
And we sold it to them in, whatever year that was, in the 80s, I guess. So we-
Yeah, with a history. Chip? Commissioner Inslee had a question. His wife is employed by Mountain Projects. Does that create a conflict for him?
Well, I don't think it necessarily does, but I think that the chair could certainly excuse him if he asked to be recused from voting. I think that would be proper.
Okay. Do you want to be recused?
I'm sure.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. If there's nothing further, then it would entertain a motion that the resolution, as read by the county manager, be approved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the record will note that Commissioner Inslee was recused from voting because of his wife's employment with Mountain Projects. Okay. Anything else? If not, then would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the following reasons. Attorney-client privilege, 143318.11A3. Personnel, 143318.11A6. And economic development, 143318.11A4.
So moved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have returned from closed session. Is there additional business for the board? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?